Good evening and welcome to the February 27, 2018 City Council Meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. Acting City Clerk, Vicky Hashay, could you take role, please?
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Mayor Medina.
Here. Good evening, everybody. May I ask Milhans from the Rotary Club to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
......................................................
Just for the record, Laura Davis is absent with notice. For announcements this evening, the only one for those that do want to speak this evening under public comment or for items on the agenda, there are speaker cards with Vicky. You can have them filled out and she'll call your name at the appropriate time. Next item is Presentations. This is going to be in regards to a resolution honoring Carolyn Livinggood as a recipient of the recognition of the Extraordinary Service Award. This is a very unique thing for this community. And we're going to begin it with Kerry Burns to give us some update on how we're here and how the process works.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. It is my distinct privilege to present a resolution for your consideration and action this evening honoring Carolyn Livinggood as the first recipient of the city's recognition of extraordinary service award. By way of background, in October 2010, the City Council approved the memorial and recognition policy. Through the policy, an awards program was created to recognize and honor the extraordinary community service of an individual or organization through the creation of three unique awards: the personal tribute, the recognition of special service, and the recognition of extraordinary service. This policy establishes the following criteria for the selection of the recipient for the recognition of extraordinary service award. At least two recognized San Bruno organizations must complete a nomination form. The nomination must have a minimum of 25 years of dedicated service to San Bruno. The service rendered must demonstrate a positive impact on citizens of San Bruno. The nominee must be viewed as an appropriate role model in the community. The nominee must demonstrate significant contributions to the community by developing new programs, providing leadership for the enhancement of existing programs, or by providing new or improved facilities. And the nominee must demonstrate active involvement in multiple community programs influencing the lives of many San Bruno citizens. Per the City Council-approved policy guidelines, a selection committee comprised of two members of each of the three city commissions meets annually in February to review nominations for the recognition of special service award and recognition of extraordinary service award. Five affirmative votes of the six-member selection committee are required to bring forward a recommendation to the City Council for its consideration and action. A majority City Council vote is required to approve the award. More than one recipient can receive the annual award, and both living and deceased individuals are eligible for the award. For the first time in the history of the awards program, earlier this year, the city received a recognition of extraordinary service award nomination honoring longtime San Bruno resident Carolyn Livinggood from the Rotary Club of San Bruno and from the San Bruno Lions Club. As the City Council may recall, Ms. Livinggood was an original member of the Recycling Committee, later known as the Beautification Task Force, served as a charter member of the San Bruno Culture and Arts Commission, and was a 25-year member of the Citizens Crime Prevention Committee. She was passionate in her support for Skyline College and served as the chairperson of the first bond campaign to raise funding to build the college and served on the Skyline College Presidents' Council until her passing. Perhaps one of Ms. Livinggood's greatest passions was her tireless work on behalf of United States veterans. She led the annual Veterans Day and Memorial Day programs, the Wreaths Across America Program, and was instrumental in leading the initiative to replace the cyclone fencing along Sneath Lane and San Bruno Avenue surrounding the National Cemetery with the new wrought iron fence that you now see. She also served on the committee which successfully gained approval to modify the name of Sneath Lane to add honorary Veterans Way. Consistent with the award program guidelines, staff convened the Committee of Commissioners on February 15th to review the nominations submitted by the Rotary Club of San Bruno and the San Bruno Lions Club. In a unanimous vote, the committee recommends to the City Council that Carolyn Livinggood receive the recognition of extraordinary service award. I would like to acknowledge that members of the Rotary Club of San Bruno, the San Bruno Lions Club, and Selection Committee members are here this evening. This concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to staff? I believe we're also going to have some representatives from each of the organizations have some comments. Chris, would you like to go first, please? Madam Vice.
It's going to be brief.
Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission and Rotarian.
Parks and Rec Commission and the Rotary Club of San Bruno. Mayor and members of the City Council, Carolyn was a proud contributing member in San Bruno for many years and is an inspiration to us all. Many of us have served on countless boards and commissions with her, and she is a prime example of the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self." The Rotary Club of San Bruno was proud to partner with the San Bruno Lions to nominate Carolyn Livinggood for the extraordinary service award. This award is given to individuals that have given more than 25 years of service to the San Bruno community. Thank you.
Now, we'd like to hear from President of the San Bruno Lions, Peter Carey, please.
It is a great honor to recognize Carolyn for all of the support, love, and commitment that she has shown through our city for, obviously, decades. As the president this year of the Lions Club, I am just really proud and honored to have been just a small part of the nomination process and so on, and it's certainly a recognition award that's very well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Also, just to acknowledge Lex is here, Carolyn's daughter. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you all for being here. At this time, it comes back to the council for appropriate action on the resolution before us. Irene.
I'd like to introduce the resolution, and I'd also like to add and let people know that Carolyn Livinggood was also a founding member of the San Bruno Library Foundation, and she was a staunch supporter of building a new library, which someday we will have. So I am introducing the resolution.
Vicky.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilmember Medina.
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar.
Yes.
Mayor Medina.
Absolutely, yes. Lexi, if you would, yes. If you would join me at the podium, we have the official resolution, and upon my signature, it will become official.
It's just me.
It's not going to be long, because as you can tell, I'm very emotional right now. It's still very raw. Thank you. I know this would be a huge honor to her, and she is, she's tickle pink right now, but I want you to know, she loved this city. She loves San Bruno. And I got to be honest, I tried several times to get her to move to the sun. Just even, we could stay in San Bruno, but we had to get out of the fog in Pacific Heights. But she refused. This was her home. And all I can say is, you're going to hear a lot more from me, because I want some things changed in this city, and I'm going to continue on her legacy and fight for the things that were important to her as I'm keeping her home, and I'll be here. So thank you once again, all of you, for honoring her this way.
Congratulations to Carolyn, congratulations to this community, and how blessed we were to have had her in our life and in our town, and for her to call this home. We're going to go ahead and just take a few minutes recess so everybody can get resituated. And thank you for all the coming from both organizations and for your contribution and commitment in nominating her. We're going to call the meeting back to order. We're going to move on to item five.
Number five, Consent Calendar. All items are considered routine or implement in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
Any action on the consent?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who know, ayes have it. Next.
Item six, Public Hearing. Hold public hearing and take the following actions to approve the Skyline College Residential Project at 3300 College Drive. And this consists of seven items. One is to adopt a resolution adopting an environmental impact report, addendum, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Number two, adopt resolution amending the general plan. Number three, waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 12.96 of the San Bruno Municipal Code to establish a planned development district. Number four, adopt resolution approving a vesting tentative map. Number five, adopt resolution approving a planned development permit for the single-family portion. Number six, adopt resolution approving a planned development permit for the multifamily portion. Number seven, adopt resolution authorizing installation of stop signs.
Thank you, Vicky. So for this evening, what we're going to do is hear from staff, any council questions to staff. Then we're going to like to hear from the applicant, please, and then we'll open up to the public hearing.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. This item is a request for planning approvals to allow the construction of the Skyline College Residential Project. It's located in the -- it is located in the eastern portion of Skyline College Campus, south of College Drive and east of College Road. The proposed project will create a new residential neighborhood with a total of 70 housing units consisting of 40 single-family homes and 30 multifamily homes with an internal street, parks, and landscape open areas. Very importantly, the project would help to address the region's housing crisis as the local and regional need for new housing continues to increase, and especially workforce housing for teachers and staff of the Community College District. This project was delayed from the previous City Council meeting to address a concern raised regarding environmental impacts, which we will discuss during the presentation. As a background, the San Mateo College Community College District and Summer Hill Homes are joint applicants for this project. The project site is an eight-acre vacant parcel owned by the College District. It is adjacent to single-family residential neighborhoods to the north and to the east. Marisol, the Marisol Development is to the north. The Marisol Development is to the north, and single-family homes along Ross Way are to the east, adjacent to the project site. The College Campus is to the west, and the San Francisco County Jail and the Golden Gate National Recreation Area open space is to the south. City staff has been working with the district since January 2016 in developing the site plan and architectural plans for this project. The application was submitted in April 2017, and the project has since been reviewed by the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee, the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Architectural Review Committee, and the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission unanimously recommended City Council approval of the application. I will briefly describe the features of the two housing types, and the applicants in their presentation will provide a more detailed description of the site plan and the architectural plans. The single-family portion of the project is located on six acres, and it consists, as I mentioned, of 40 single-family detached homes. The homes are located on smaller lots with an average lot size of just under 4,000 square feet. The homes would be two stories with four to five bedrooms and two-car garages. There will be four plan types averaging 3,000 square feet per home, including the garages. There are 10 different facade types, and the site plan is pre-plotted to ensure the intended mix of units on the site is maintained to create a diversity along the street frontage. And these homes will be sold at market rates. The multifamily project consists of 30 apartment units of 30 apartment units in two 15-unit buildings. And it also includes a community gathering area and surface parking areas. The units would be one to three bedrooms ranging in size from about 750 square feet to about 1,300 square feet. The district will develop, own, and manage the apartments as affordable workforce housing for college faculty and staff, many of whom will work on the Skyline College Campus. The district has successfully developed two similar projects at other campuses, at the other two community college campuses in San Mateo County, and Barbara Christensen of the College District will discuss that. A private street will run through the development with a primary entrance from College Drive opposite the Marisol Drive, and a second entrance will be from College Road at the south side of the site. The street will loop through the single-family development. The project includes a children's play area, which will be open and accessible to the public, a private neighborhood park, landscape common space, and an off-site fitness park. The entire development will be maintained by an HOA, Homeowners Association, and the College District, including the private streets, infrastructure, and all landscaped areas, everything excluding the water mains. So the project requires a number of approvals to move forward. There are seven approvals in total. And the first one that we're going to discuss is the, I'll go through all of them briefly, but the first one we're going to discuss is the environmental determination, and I'm going to let David handle this.
Thank you, Mark. At your last council meeting on January 23rd, or a prior meeting on January 23rd, this item was brought before you, and there were some issues raised regarding the environmental document that had been prepared for the project. As a result of those comments raised by Mr. Don Hankins, staff recommended to the City Council, and the City Council decided to continue this item to this evening. We've had our environmental consultant, ICF, do a thorough review of all the environmental documents associated with the project. And in terms of that review, they've determined that the issues raised regarding appropriate wetland mitigation had been actually appropriately and fully completed and addressed. And Mr. Hankins indicated that he had worked on the project, a subsequent project in 2002, the Marisol Project, and as he had worked on that project, there were certain mitigation requirements that he indicated that he determined had not been fully implemented. Actually, the College District and Summer Hill Homes were given options to either do onsite or off-site mitigation. They worked with various agencies, including Fish and Wildlife Service, the service that Mr. Hankins worked with at that time. They also worked with Regional Water Quality Control Board. They worked with the Army Corps of Engineers. They worked with the California Department of Fish and Game. And they found a site in the city of Pacifica for off-site mitigation. And in fact, they entered into an agreement and fully mitigated the wetland and species impacts that had been identified with the Marisol Project. And the species involved were the red-legged frog and also the garter snake. So there was full mitigation, and it was documented. Subsequently, in 2015, the College District did a facilities, an overall facilities master plan with a full environmental impact report. And that environmental impact report looked at the subject site as well as other properties and facilities within the Skyline Campus. There was a site survey done, there was a record survey done, and it was determined that in 2015, that there was not any habitat, wetland habitat, on Parcel B, the subject site that we're looking at this evening. Nor was there any evidence of the red-legged frog or the garter snake. And that was concluded and determined based on site observations and analysis, and that's contained in a fully certified EIR. It was done in 2015 by ICF, the consultant, working on the addendum this evening with this project. That 2015 certified EIR was completed in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. There was a notice of determination filed, and there was a 180-day challenge period. That certified EIR was not challenged during that period. That EIR is fully vested at this time. The addendum before you tonight, the addendum that considers the current project, is tiered off of, it's based on the 2015 certified legally standing EIR. It concludes that there are no protected species on this site, that there is no wetland habitat on this site, and therefore, there's no need or requirement for further mitigation. We've asked the consultant from ICF to do a thorough review of both the prior project in 2002, the Marisol Project, and all of the environmental documentation associated with that, including the agreement, the off-site mitigation agreement, and multiple other documents prepared by various agencies, as I mentioned earlier. We also asked ICF to look back at their 2015 plan and review the site survey, the observations that they did at that time, as well as the records research. We've provided some materials to you in the staff report indicating that ICF concludes, based on their review and analysis of the 2002 documents, their 2015 report, their site observations, their record survey, that in terms of going forward with respect to the wetland mitigation issues, those have been addressed, and we can move forward with the addendum document. We did receive another letter today, in addition to the correspondence that I referenced from Mr. Hankins. We received a letter today, a copy of which is at the dais for all of you, from the Committee for Green Foothills. The author of that letter is Helen Walter. Ms. Walter takes a similar position to Mr. Hankins in that she indicates that her sense is that perhaps the environmental documentation done in 2015 in terms of wetlands and species habitat was insufficient. Again, I go back to our review and our consultant's review, going back to the 2002 documents coming forward, that we stand by the 2015 fully certified and legally standing environmental document that addresses this site, Parcel B, that the determination is that there are not wetlands on this site or protected species, and that we can go forward with that document as a base in terms of tiering as allowed by the California Environmental Quality Act. If there are further questions on this matter, I'd be happy to respond to those questions, perhaps at the end of the presentation here. Mark has a number of other issues to talk about. We'd be pleased to provide more information as requested regarding the environmental review. But as it stands, we also have the environmental consultant in the audience tonight. We stand by the addendum, and we're recommending that you move forward tonight and approve that addendum document. So unless you have questions at this point, Mark would continue with the presentation.
Any questions from council on this point? Marty?
Thank you. So the time to make the objections passed, pretty much is what I'm trying to get a summary of it.
The time to, you know, bring up issues or concerns about Parcel B would have been in 2015. So at that time, when the Community College District worked with the consultant, ICF, to do that document, at that time, there were public meetings and hearings regarding Parcel B and the other sites and facilities. It would have been at that time that a concerned citizen could have and should have come forward, and their concern should have and would have been addressed at that time. Now, that document has been certified, it's gone through its challenge period, which is 180 days, and it's a fully vested and legally standing document at this time. So yes.
Does, or can the consultant provide any response to the claims made from the emails and letters that we've received?
We've spoken to the consultant about that. The consultant has reviewed project notes, the environmental document, and so have we. And in reviewing the 2015 environmental document that's been certified and is legally standing, there were record surveys in terms of habitat, species in the vicinity. There were site surveys and observations, and in 2015, there was no indication based on the site surveys, observations, record research of either habitat or species, red-legged frog, or other species on the site at that time. Thank you.
Other questions on this item? If not, Mark, can you continue your report, please?
So the next approvals relate to land use changes, and the project requires amendments to the general plan and the zoning code to move forward. The base general plan land use, the underlying general plan land use classification for the site is low-density residential. So this slide shows the entire site, which is eight acres, and as you can see, the general plan is low-density residential, and the zoning district is open space. That's the current, those are the current designations. So the zoning code is not consistent with the general plan, which is contrary to state law. Oh, sorry. So the general plan would, amendment, would change the land use of a two-acre site, portion of, a two-acre portion of the overall Parcel B, to medium-density residential to facilitate and support the 30 apartment units that are designed to retain and attract faculty and staff. You and staff. You can see that is at the south end of the project site. That general plan amendment is consistent with the city's housing element objectives, and the housing element also identifies this site as a housing opportunity site to help meet the city's mandated regional housing needs allocation goals. The zoning code amendment would change the zoning, as I mentioned, from open space to planned development, which would allow residential uses. So it would be a planned development for residential uses to be consistent with the general plan. A zoning code amendment would be necessary anyway, as the city moves forwards with its zoning code update, which is currently in process, as required by state law. So the zoning would have to be changed in any case to conform to the underlying general plan land use. Now, the reason this is going to be, or the recommendation is for this to be a planned development, is the purpose of planned development zoning is to provide flexibility in land use, site design, and other aspects of a development to adapt to unique site characteristics. And in this case, the PD zoning would allow a site plan that adapts to the sloping topography of the site by clustering the single-family homes on smaller lots and providing space for landscape common areas and accommodating a small apartment complex for faculty and staff housing. So the planned development zoning allows you to have the single-family, low-density residential and the multifamily site. So there would be two sub-districts within the PD. The city has approved several comparable single-family developments through the PD process in recent years, and this includes Merrimont, which was seventy units, Marisol, which is right across the street, that's a hundred and five units, Cedar Mills, that's more recent, and that's fourteen units, and Skycrest, which was twenty-four units. And although multifamily resident is not typically included in single-family neighborhoods, the faculty and staff apartment buildings would be sighted away from existing single-family neighborhoods and closer to the campus, with a design that is compatible with the scale of the campus environment and the adjacent single-family project, and very little visibility from single-family, adjacent single-family neighborhoods. So the next approval is a vesting tentative map. And what the map would do is it would subdivide the property to create the individual legal lots for the project, for the multifamily project site, forty lots for the single-family homes, and as well as streets, parks, and common areas. The next approvals would be planned development permits. So two planned development permits would be required, one for each project type, one for the single-family project, and one for the multifamily project. That's, the planned development permit is required for any parcel that's zoned PD, to ensure that the project is consistent with the PD standards, which are included in the zone code amendment, the ordinance that's in your staff report, and with the city's residential design guidelines. In terms of the review of this project, the design of the project, the project plans were reviewed by staff and the city's peer review architect, Larry Cannon. Staff concluded, together with Mr. Cannon, that overall both projects are well-designed to fit into the site and to be compatible with the adjacent single-family neighborhoods. Mr. Cannon identified only minor concerns, things such as roof pitch of the apartment buildings, rear facades facing the order court between the two apartment buildings, which have all been addressed to the satisfaction of staff and also to the planning commission as well. The planning commission reviewed the project in November of two thousand and seventeen, and they found, also found it to be well-designed and consistent with the city's design guidelines. The planning commission, as I mentioned unanimously, unanimously recommended that the city council approve the project. During public comment at the planning commission, concerns were expressed by residents about the size and height of the homes and potential dust and noise impacts during construction. The planning commission recommended that the applicants continue to work to address these concerns and to carefully plan to mitigate construction impacts as specified in the conditions of approval for the project. Since the PC meeting, the planning commission meeting, the developer has reached out to the neighbors to come to agreement on these issues. And the conditions of approval for the projects include measures to minimize construction dust and noise impacts in accordance with municipal code requirements and best management practices of the regional water and air quality boards. In addition, construction hours will be limited to Monday through Friday between seven AM and six PM, with extended hours allowed only with the approval of the community development director, which is a stricter standard than is normally allowed. And in terms of the size of the homes, several homes have been redesigned with lower roof pitches, resulting in roughly three feet reduction in height. These are the homes that are most adjacent to the neighboring Ross Way homes. And it should also just be noted that the distance between the new homes and the Ross Way homes is a minimum of about fifty-three feet, since the Ross Way homes have very large backyards. So there's quite a distance between the homes. And the zoning code provides for a minimum of ten-foot setback, so conceivably, homes could be as close as twenty feet apart, which is not the case here. And then the last approval has to do with the stop sign. As I mentioned, there's a new entrance to the project from this, I'm sorry about this slide, it's not, it's not the best, but I think it gives you an idea. So the new entrance to College Drive creates a four-way intersection with Marisol Drive across the street. An all-way stop sign is necessary at this intersection to provide adequate site distance from side streets. The project, the proposed stop sign was reviewed by the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee in November of two thousand and seventeen, and the committee supported the proposal and recommended, however, they did recommend including a left-hand turnpocket on the westbound College Drive to allow traffic to flow better past cars that stop to turn left into the project. And this was incorporated into the, into the street design, which you can, you can see there, the left-hand turnpocket. The stop sign will also help to address a neighborhood concern that was, has been expressed by a number of neighbors in that area about speeding traffic on College Drive by slowing traffic speeds. In terms of parks, the single-family project is required, under the municipal code, is required to provide point four-nine acres of parkland or pay an in-lu fee for land not provided. The project meets the acreage requirement with a total of over half an acre of parkland. And the parkland is located in the single-family development, where there's about a quarter of an acre, located in a neighborhood children's play area, which will be open to the public, and there will be a public access easement to that park, and a gathering place for residents of the community, so that will be a private space. Another roughly point-three acres is provided in an offsite fitness park that will include six outdoor exercise stations, which is on campus, sort of adjacent to the south end of the track at Skyline College. And I think Barbara Christian will talk a little bit about that. The Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed the Parks and Open Space proposal, and they recommended approval of the plan. The commissioners appreciated the fact that the parks would be maintained by the homeowners' association and by the district, so there would be no city cost to maintaining any of that open space or parks. They also noted other open space and recreational improvements provided as part of the project that would be a benefit to the community, including an upgraded class-three bike route all along College Drive, a new trail to Sweeney Ridge, and ample trees and landscaping in the common areas. Next, I'll talk about the affordable housing on the site. The project will provide much-needed housing in San Bruno, including affordable housing in the faculty and staff apartments. The project is subject to the city's Affordable Housing Impact Fee ordinance, which applies to new residential developments of five or more units. The total obligation is for eleven units affordable to low- and moderate-income households, equal to fifteen percent of the total of seventy units in the project. Staff has worked with the district to formulate an affordable housing plan that meets the city's requirements and the needs of the district. The eleven affordable units within the, all the affordable units will be located in the faculty-staff and the faculty and staff housing, and eleven units will be deed restricted there, with six units affordable to low-income households and five affordable to moderate-income households. In addition, the district would pay an Affordable Housing Impact Fee of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which would be added to the city's Affordable Housing Fund to be used for development of housing at another location. The deed-restricted affordable units will be available only to campus employees. However, these units can be counted towards the city's regional housing needs allocation Additionally, the remaining nineteen apartment units will be offered at below-market rates to college faculty and staff, and this is part of a district program to recruit and retain employees by encouraging employees to save money to apply to a down payment to buy housing in the area. And it can be combined with the district's second loan program. So there's been extensive public outreach throughout the planning process for this project. Notices for all hearings and neighborhood meetings have been mailed to neighbors within a one-thousand-foot radius of the project site, which is far greater than normal, and it reaches four hundred and seventy-one surrounding households. The applicants held two noticed informational neighborhood meetings to receive neighbor input and have engaged with surrounding homeowners and groups and individually on an ongoing basis. The applicants have considered resident input as the project plans were developed. The neighborhood reaction has been positive overall. Major concerns, as I've mentioned, include the size of the homes, especially with regard to the Ross Way neighbors, traffic issues on College Drive, which, you know, I think is partially addressed or helped to be addressed by the stop sign, the new stop sign, access to parks in the development, and construction impacts. The applicants continue to work with the neighbors to address their concerns right up to today, and they'll continue to do that, and I think Elaine will talk about that. And the applicants will provide more information about the public outreach. Just wanted to mention that staff did receive an email from a Marisol resident after issuing the staff report, and that resident asked whether the new project could share in the costs to maintain the landscape median in College Drive, which is actually subject to a two thousand and two maintenance agreement with the college district when the Marisol development was first opened. And staff responded that it's not recommending that the project share in this cost, mainly because Marisol streets are public, maintained by the city. While the new project would have all private streets, sidewalks, streetlights, parks, landscape open space, and other public infrastructure, which will all be the responsibility of an HOA or the college district. So the burden on this new project is considerably higher than at Marisol. In conclusion, staff feels that this project will create, oh yes, let me, sorry, there's one issue, I should have brought this up a little bit earlier, but this has to do with the vesting tentative map. And recently, this issue came up, there's a condition of approval that states that the streets, the streetlights should have a light intensity of one foot candle per square foot minimum, which is quite high, actually, used, you know, more commonly in larger streets, parking lots, and so forth. So staff is recommending that we change that condition of approval, that's condition of approval number seventy-eight in the vesting tentative map, and it would read, "A detailed photometric study shall be prepared to evaluate areas within the development and around the exterior frontages to determine the minimum light intensity for streetlights to the satisfaction of the city engineer." And we've had some discussions with the city engineer about this, and we've agreed that this is an appropriate condition of approval. So in conclusion, the project will create a new residential neighborhood of high architectural quality that provides family housing and affordable workforce housing for college faculty and staff. It would fill in a gap, vacant area, between the campus and the residential neighborhoods. The project would include new parks, landscaping, internal streets, water, storm drain, and sanitary sewers, all of which would be privately owned and maintained, except for the water. Everything except the water would be privately owned and maintained with no cost to the city. And video of the sewer line identified that repairs are necessary along the sewer line in front of the project, which the city would have to construct without the project, the project is doing that. In addition, the project will provide some oversizing of water lines, which is needed for future connections between the pump station on Skyline and College Drive and the water tank behind the college that will have a wider public benefit. Accordingly, staff feels is in a position to recommend that the city council approve the proposed project. And that ends my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
This is to council, do you want to hear from the developer and applicant first, or would you like, do you have questions to staff? Would you like? Okay. Barbara, please. Elaine?
Good evening. My name is Barbara Christensen, and I'm formerly of the college district. I retired a couple of years ago, but I agreed to carry on with this project, which we had started before I retired. I want to introduce our team today. Mitch Bailey over there is chief of staff of the college district. Elaine Breeze and Richard Norris are from Summer Hill Homes. Jill Williams, right there in front, is our architect. Sherry Van Dorn is our landscape architect, and Eric Swanson is our engineer with BKF Engineers. The college district employs fourteen hundred, and we serve forty thousand students a year. In the early two thousands, we had higher-than-normal attrition rates, and candidates who were offered jobs were not taking them. We did a survey of fourteen hundred of our employees, we got seven hundred and something responses, it was an electronic survey, and we found that eighteen percent of our faculty and staff were planning to leave us in the next three years. This was in two thousand and one, I want to say, or two thousand and two, and sixty-three percent of them said it was because of the cost of housing. So the problems have only gotten worse. In response, we built College Vista, which is forty-four units, it opened in two thousand and five, and we built Kenyatta Vista, sixty units, which opened in two thousand and ten. We began discussions, as Mark said, with the city of San Bruno in... We began discussions, as Mark said, with the city of San Bruno in 2014, actually, regarding a potential development that would have single-family and apartments for faculty and staff. The project has evolved significantly from the 2015 conceptual plans in response to feedback from the city, neighbors, the Architectural Review Committee, the Parks Commission, Traffic Parking and Safety Committee, and the city's Architectural Review Consultant. The way we run our program is we allow residents to live in our units for up to seven years. Originally, it was five years, but because the cost of housing has gone up so much, we extended it to seven years, and we may even have to extend it even more with a goal of saving for a down payment. Anyone from the college district can live in these apartments, so long as they are not a homeowner. We also have a 10-year second loan program of up to $150,000 to help with the purchase. To date, 47 of our employees have moved out of employee housing and bought a house, and more importantly, they're still with us. As Mark said, the college district is permanently dedicating 11 of the 30 units as affordable units and paying the $320,000 into the city's housing fund. Even though we're doing this, rents for all of our 104 current apartments are significantly below market, and I did a quick calculation, and if we maintain the same rates for the new development as we have for the old ones, and we have done that, like, we're going to have the same rates for everybody, I estimate that our rents will be 50% to 54% below the median San Bruno rate. One other notable statistic is that employees living in our faculty and staff apartments, we did a survey of them, they save more than 920,000 commute miles a year, and 61% of them walk to work. Those on the waitlist for the apartments are currently traveling -- we've got about 100 and -- well, more than 150 people on our waitlist. They're currently traveling 1.2 million commute miles a year. We surveyed all of the current residents of college and Canyada Vista, and to ask them if we built housing at Skyline, would they prefer to live there? Almost all of the Skyline employees indicated that they would like to move from either Canyada Vista or College Vista to Skyline so that they could be closer to campus. We consistently hear from our residents that because of the proximity to campus, they're able to spend more time on campus working with students. I'd like to say that the design review process has been very collaborative, and we appreciate the support that city staff has contributed. As detailed in the staff report, we have -- can we get that next slide up? We've held two community meetings and followed up with a number of meetings with the Rossway neighbors that continued up through last week. We also held productive and supportive meetings with the Architectural Review Committee, Parks and Rec, Traffic Safety and Parking, and Planning Commission. We received advice, direction, and approvals from each of those agencies. So I -- thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Medina and council members. My name's Elaine Breeze. I'm with Summer Hill, and we appreciate the opportunity to be back here in San Bruno and working in your city again. Tonight, I'd like to provide an overview of our project design, our outreach process, and community benefits. I'd like to first highlight the changes we've made since the Planning Commission meeting, where we received a unanimous approval. As mentioned, we lowered the height of 11 homes. Those were focused primarily up along the northern part of Rossway. We added decorative paving. We added the Class III bike route. We're replacing failing sewer main segments in the street. In meeting with -- having additional meetings with the Rossway residents, we agreed to plant two rear yard screening trees on their lots where it's beneficial, hydroseed areas where they decided to have their lots filled, removed additional trees that are actually on their lot, and to date, we have three people accepting an offer to fill their yards, which I'll describe in a little bit more. With regard to construction, noise, dust control and noise, we agreed to do pre-construction surveys of all the existing lots before we start, and then identified additional best practices for dust reduction, including adding mesh screen on their -- the backsides of their fences where they're porous, because they're actually higher, and we thought it would be more productive. And then, as mentioned, we will have shorter work hours than your ordinance actually permits. So we've made a number of changes even since the Planning Commission hearing. So the Skyline Residential Project is an integrated plan with both for-sale and single-family and rental housing. It respects the site's topography and takes cues from Marisol. The vision started with completing the College Drive street scene, complementing what was started with Marisol, and this included well-articulated rear elevations of the homes facing out to College Drive, upgrading the walls, landscaping, a new sidewalk, and bike lane. And the home design started with a focus on livability and creating a lot width that would allow for good ground floor living space, and the street scene that allows for focus on front porches and entries and a de-emphasis of garages. The lot size also allowed for side-to-side stepping on -- to work as the grades, as the lots moved up the site, and it minimized walls. And early on in the process, all of these goals were discussed with staff. Larry Cannon and the Architectural Review Committee all provided valuable input that ultimately created the design in front of you this evening. This is a view from College Drive. It's the new stop sign on your right and the project entry to the left. You can see the rear elevations are all enhanced. There's new landscaping, upgraded entry walls and entry signage. This is the view -- internal view of the single-family neighborhoods at the park -- neighborhood at the park, and you can see the -- this illustrates the articulation of the homes and how they transition up the rising street with the careful attention to the landscape design. Another design goal was that the apartments complement the new single-family homes, and as viewed here, the buildings will be compatible with the new homes, featuring strong articulation and quality detailing throughout. And the streetscape design has been upgraded on all fronts in response to staff requests, and this includes, on the bottom left, a two-tone beveled edge architectural retaining wall with vines and plantings to soften. This is a front elevation of the faculty and staff apartments, and each building has enclosed parking. It's more like a townhome design, with the garages facing onto one interior drive and the front doors facing out towards the open spaces and the single-family neighborhood. The team received input from Larry Cannon requesting larger eaves, a slightly steeper roof line, better articulated entry points, and more detail along the driveway elevation. These items were all discussed with the IRC, further refined, and are reflected here. These are views from the shared driveway and the building ends, again, having incorporated all of the comments. This is a representative street scene of the single-family homes. As mentioned, we have 10 distinctive home designs, offering well-articulated elevations, a variety of roof lines, massing, and high-quality detailing. The homes range from about 2460 to 2695 square feet, not including the garage. This is the Plan 1. It's our smallest and most prevalent plan, and note the variety of porch treatments varying both in width and depth. The original Plan 1, as I mentioned, we reduced the roof height, so the elevation C was lowered by three feet. The original design's on the left, and the new design is on the right. The Plan 2 is often located on corner lots, featuring additional articulation on the sides. This C elevation was also revised, original on the left and new design on the right, reduced by three feet. And you can really see the impact here of this change. This is a view from College Drive and Allen. So the left is where it's currently vacant dirt, and you can see the overhead power lines in the public utility easement. So this is the original view. We'll be planting the foreground as shown, original view, and then the new view. So it had a real impact at Rossway. The Plan 3 is a split-level plan that was added specifically to areas where the site topography is the steepest, absorbing the slope within the house and minimizing site-retaining walls. And the fourth plan is our largest plan. It has second-floor massing uniquely projecting over the garage to add to the street scene. Now, I'd like to touch a little bit more on the residential parkland plan. As mentioned, we'll be providing .55 acres of new parkland. Two parks will be provided within the single-family project, including a neighborhood park with children's play area and a game lounge area, and the balance will be on Skyline Campus in a nearly third of an acre new outdoor fitness park. The neighborhood park is designed to accommodate children of all ages, including main play structure, play elements, benches, and lighting and landscaping. It will be maintained by the HOA but accessible to all San Bruno residents and is visible from College Drive. The game lounge area will be available to both the single-family residents and apartment residents, and it's designed for all ages. In response to the Parks Commission, we did revise the park design to make primary accommodation for the five- to 12-year-olds, and then added play elements for the two- to five-year-olds as well. The game and lounge area will have a number of amenities as well. The outdoor fitness park is -- will be open to the public and located conveniently near the track and soccer fields, which are lightly used by the college and heavily used by San Bruno residents for their fitness regime. And locating the park here will enhance these San Bruno residents' experience. They can easily walk or bike to the park from the neighborhood, and there will be a convenient designated parking area in Lot A as well. The fitness park is designed to offer a full-body workout. Six stations for cardio and strengthening will be designed -- excuse me, connected by a decomposed granite path, with each station mounted in rubber surfacing. Here are the six different machines. They're designed for public use and to weather the San Bruno microclimate, and the park will also include city and college signage and bike racks. There will also be a new trail connection and wayfinding signage to Sweeney Ridge and the Notch Trail. This is off-site, and we're working with GGNRA with regard to the signage. This will provide a new safe access for San Bruno residents walking to Notch Trail and new signage to create public awareness of the trail, and this will be constructed after the campus projects are completed. As Mark and Barbara described, we have had a broad outreach process, hosting two neighborhood meetings, one onsite meeting, and have continued to meet and communicate with neighbors throughout the process. Our invitations were sent to 471 property owners for each meeting. In addition, we've met with nine of the 17 Rossway homeowners, and in some cases, multiple times onsite. We've hosted our first neighborhood meeting in November 2016 to review our plans. Comments we've received were the request for the Always Stop at Marisol, questions regarding view, house size, stepbacks, traffic, amenities, tree removal, and this feedback was considered as our formal plans were developed, including studying the relationship between those lots and our proposed project. And it was noted that a majority of the existing Rossway -- existing rear yard fences were located on the house side of a 20-foot-wide public utility easement. So when we hosted our second neighborhood meeting in July of 2017, some of the Rossway homeowners indicated they were not aware of the PU, and they didn't realize that their backyard included that area outside of their fence. So as a result, homeowners asked about potential fencing improvements, tree removal, drainage, and, quote, "filling in their lots where the slope -- where they slope towards the shared property line." So this shows really that relationship. The existing fence is shown in red, and the green is the actual property line. The purple are the new houses, and the Rossway are in the yellow, but you can see the difference of how it swung. The blue is the overhead power lines. This is a blow-up of the lots closest to College Drive and we spent the most time with. You can see the existing fence again in red. Basically, they had about twice as much backyard than they have inside their fence right now. This gives you an idea. We actually did a staking of the property line so people could get an idea of where their actual property line was, and then the upper-left photo shows the area that we would be landscaping adjacent to Allen Drive as well. This is a study we prepared in response to these questions as well. We actually took it through PG&E to get approved, and it's the idea of filling in the residents' backyards that slope backwards, and that's the green area. We got it approved by PG&E. We've offered to fill those at our expense and hydroseed the green area, which would basically flatten and expand those residents' usable backyard. The three homeowners on the left have accepted our offer. So we've made a number of changes in response to the neighborhood feedback. As listed here, the stop sign, giving access to the parks, pad grades, rear yard setbacks, trees, lowering the house height, and then, as noted, we've made a number of offers of improvements to the Rossway rear yards. So they have a whole menu, basically, the people that we've met with, you know, with regard to what we'll do with this adjacency. So it might be removing their rear yard fence, adding fence returns, adding a gate, removing trees, filling their lots, adding street screening trees, mesh screen, and removing more trees. So we've been working with each of them, and that would be a process that would just continue as we move forward. This exhibit, it shows an -- you know, we've just described more of the benefits to the immediate neighborhood neighbors, but this exhibit shows an overview of the public improvements and amenities that the project will bring to the San Bruno residents at large. The first shows the Class III bike lane running from Skyline all the way to the outdoor fitness park. That's the blue dots. So that's consistent with the city's new walk-and-bike plan. It's about 2/3 of a mile long, and it will include sheroes, striping, and signage. Next, the cranberry is a new sidewalk from Allen Drive to the -- all the way to the meeting a new accessible path and to the outdoor fitness park with a crosswalk shown as well. So these new crosswalks and sidewalks and bike lanes will provide safe access to both the fitness park and the campus in general. And you might know, but there's a free shuttle that currently runs from Daly City Bart to Skyline. So San Bruno residents, the neighborhood, could actually use this shuttle in reverse. So by providing these improvements, it will make it safer to get to campus and to ride this shuttle. There will also be the new trail connection in purple and the GGNRA signage, and then, as discussed previously, the neighborhood park number one, the outdoor fitness park number two, the neighborhood landscaping number three, and the Always Stop number four. This graphic shows our public infrastructure improvements and just shows graphically what Mark Sullivan described as the private maintenance obligations of the project. So this is very different than our other two projects that we did in -- we've done in San Bruno, where in those cases, everything was public. In this case, staff has required private maintenance of everything, with the exception of the water services. So everything you see in yellow will be maintained by the HOA, sidewalks, you know, underground utilities, all the C3, stormwater quality, maintenance areas, the streetlights and the street electricity, about an acre of landscaping. All the parks we described will be part of the maintenance of the project. And then, more near-term, as shown out on College Drive, is the repair of the existing sewer line. In purple is the new storm drain and manhole, and then in blue is the new water main. I should note also, within the privately maintained yellow streets, if you will, we'll be building a network for San Bruno Cable to accommodate their fiber infrastructure to all 70 residents per their requirement as well. So in addition to those physical improvements, as mentioned previously, our additional community benefits are the 30 affordable apartment homes, as described by Barbara, and $320,000 in affordable housing fees. This walk-to-work function and facilitating recruitment and retention is great. We're providing four new single-family homes. There are only 14 homes available in San Bruno for sale right now, single-family homes. We have $360,000 in school impact fees and an estimated increase in 60 million dollars in new assessed property valuation, and that's coupled with us taking on the burden of maintaining all the -- both amenities and infrastructure that we're building. So with that, we are very excited to have this opportunity to partner with the college district to provide new affordable housing for their employees, as well as new single-family housing in San Bruno, along with the many benefits for the entire San Bruno community. And on behalf of the college district and Summer Hill, we accept the conditions of approval in the staff report, and we request your approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you both for your reports. With council's permission, I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing, if that's okay, and then we'll bring it to council. No, we're not going to open it. So are there any speakers for ... Those that are wishing to speak on the public hearing?
Michelle Hager.
Michelle, if you can go ahead and go to the podium and the mic, please, since we're televised. Your name and street, if you wish. We'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening. Mayor Medina.
Good evening, Mayor Medina and council members and county, and community members. My name is Michelle Hager. I currently live at 3403 CSM Drive, so in San Mateo. And I currently serve your community as the Classified Senate President at Skyline College, and I also currently serve as the Program Services Coordinator in our Career Services Center. First of all, thank you so much for hearing the information tonight, and thank you for letting me speak. I'd like to let you know that when my husband and I got the news that we were able to move into the apartments down at CSM, so we have faculty and staff housing at CSM, it was like winning the lottery. We, we were on the list for quite a while, and I was expecting our first child. We only have one right now, for now. And she, she's two, and so for us, that was a really big deal, because we were living in a very tiny, tiny little apartment for a very large amount of money that we were barely making. And so the opportunity to move into a larger spot so that we can accommodate our new child, and also to be able to start looking towards the future for saving was an incredible opportunity. And we were really, really grateful and thankful to the district for that. So thank you to Barbara for that. But aside from that, I think also what's important for me to point out is, part of the reason why this faculty-staff housing is so critical, I think, for staff on campus and for faculty members, is that it really does address the many challenges that staff members are facing, such as the commute. And it really allows us the opportunity to strongly consider quality of life and allow that to lead our decisions. I think quality of life sometimes often falls to the bottom of the list as we look at the rising housing costs, and it makes it very difficult to come to work, especially if you have a long commute. And then, we sometimes realize that we spend more time at school than we do at home. And so having a really short commute really allows us to come to, come to our families at a decent hour and spend time with them, feel refreshed, and then go back to work, making it easier for us to do our jobs. And I'm really excited to say that I absolutely love my job. I'm not saying that because I'm here, I really do, I love it. And I think just the fact that I get to live close to the campus and that I'm able to do my job, come home to my family, and meet the needs of the campus and our goals for student success is immeasurable. Additionally, the opportunity to save and the various programs that the district offers to us as well, so that we can afford a house later on, is also a benefit. So for me, it was a blessing, and it still is. So I just want to say thank you, and I really appreciate the opportunity to open up this, open up this housing. And because I live at CSM, I work at Skyline College, I would be one of the people that would move to Skyline College. So you have a face. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
David McLean, followed by Danielle Powell.
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is David McLean. Actually, I live in San Mateo, at the Bay Meadows Development. My name is David McLean. I've worked for College of San Mateo, one of the three colleges within the San Mateo County Community College District, for 16 years. I'm excited to be here tonight to briefly describe my positive experience with the district's faculty and staff housing. The benefits of this program are numerous. It obviously helps employees of the district with affordable housing in a very high-cost region, but it also enhances our ability to recruit and hire talented individuals. I've been on many hiring committees in the district, and I'm always impressed with the amazing candidate pools we attract. From these candidates, we get outstanding employees. This is the primary reason I've worked for the district as long as I have. The quality of the people I work with every day, faculty, staff, and administrators, are top-notch. My colleagues work very hard to provide the education and support services that our communities need and deserve. Helping employees live in the communities where they work only strengthens their commitment to high-quality public service. The housing also benefits the greater community by taking cars off of our congested roads. For the five years I lived at College of San Mateo, I walked to and from work every day. Not only did my mental and physical health improve, I saved a total of 9,000 miles commuting. Good for the colleges and the district, good for our communities, and good for the employees and their families. These are the broad points I'd like to make, but I'd also like to tell you about some of the impactful benefits I've experienced from the district housing on a more personal level. I moved into the CSM College Vista when it first opened. This was the first rental in the Bay Area I was able to afford without a roommate. I was ecstatic. During those five years at that location, I met the woman who would soon become my wife. Our wedding reception was held at the College Vista Clubhouse. A few years later, we were expecting our first child, which happened to coincide with the opening of Canyada Vista. That timing presented us with the opportunity to move into a two-bedroom unit for just a few hundred dollars more than what we were paying. Up until this point, having affordable housing, living close to work, and saving money allowed us to start a family and begin putting down roots. Living at Canyada Vista allowed us to continue saving money. This in turn allowed me to go back to school to finish my bachelor's degree. Shortly after completing that, an unexpected opportunity presented itself. San Mateo's First-Time Homebuyer Program was offering below-market-rate homes within the new Bay Meadows Development. My wife and I jumped at the opportunity and submitted our application. Within a year, we were proud homeowners of a new three-bedroom townhome in one of the hottest developments on the peninsula. Since then, we've had our second child, and I'm currently working on a master's degree. The district's housing didn't just give me an affordable place to live, it gave me the foundation to build a life, a family, and a career. Words cannot express how grateful I am for this, so I do my best to throw, show it through my actions. I arrive to work every day with a determined sense of purpose and a passion for serving my college, my district, and my community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
David McLean.
That was him. That was David.
As you can tell, I'm not the city clerk. Not, not nearly as competent as she is.
No, I just thought you enjoyed it, you wanted to hear it again.
Where's the other one? That would be Danielle Powell. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, everyone. My name is Danielle Powell. I am a professor of Communication Studies at Skyline College, but I also coordinate two programs over there. And I was actually, I just left work when I walked in here. And I want to say thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, and distinguished council members, for the opportunity to share very briefly my story with you about the benefits of being able to live in district housing. I moved here, and I live down Canyada Vista, the one in Redwood City. I moved here from the Seattle area about four years ago. And when I first moved here, I was out of $52,000 from a home that I purchased right before the recession hit in Seattle. And my house was, it was originally $100,000 underwater, and 52 by the time that I moved here. And it cost me $12,000 to relocate from Seattle to here. And I paid all of that out of pocket. And when I first moved here, I was on the waitlist to get into housing, and I was paying out $3,000 a month just for rent to live by myself. And I was living in a place where I had to park on the street, and if I didn't get home by six o'clock, there was nowhere to park. And it affected the classes that I was able to teach. I couldn't teach in the evenings. I couldn't stay and, and work late to, to do what I'm doing right now, which is what is most meaningful for me, and, and that is mentoring. And actually, two of the young ladies are here with me today that I actually mentor, because we were at school late, and I gave them a ride home. They actually live in Nigeria, but they're here with us, they're international students. And they live here in the area, and it's so important for me to be able to, to be present to my students. You guys have heard from Michelle and, what was, what was, David? Yes, that was a beautiful story. By the way, I hate that I had to go after you. You've heard from them about the benefits, the cost benefits to us, but the benefits to our students, to the people that we serve here in this community is what's most valuable to me about being able to live in district housing, because there's no way that I could be at work this late, helping students who are in crisis, if I had to figure out where I'm going to park or think about that, which is what was happening my first semester here until I was able to get in district housing. So I just, I wish every city worker had this opportunity. Every teacher in this area had this opportunity, because it is extremely high cost to live here, especially when you move from another area. So I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I do hope that you approve this, because it is really valuable, not just to us, but to our students and to the people that we serve in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speaker cards?
Not that I'm aware of.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak? If we close public hearing, anybody else? Okay? Yep, yep, hold on. Yes. Please.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for taking a moment to listen to my comments. If, if I heard you correctly, I understand that there's not, there's not a plan to, to landscape the median coming off of Sneath, going up to College Drive to the new development. I don't know who is talking, I apologize. I'd like to find who the developer is and ask the question to that person. Is, is there any plans to, to landscape the median coming off, which is the gateway going up to the, the new homes as well as Skyline College?
We'll go ahead and wait where all the questions are asked, and then we'll get questions from the staff or developer. The answers, I mean.
Okay.
For you.
Okay.
So, medians, you're fine. Okay. Are there, is there anybody, any other questions or comments from folks here tonight? Now, can I have action to close public hearing?
To the chair, I'll move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? Okay. So we'll bring it back to the city council. We can maybe just take on the, I had a quick question of the developer, and then maybe we can also ask that same thing to staff, who best is appropriate to answer the median question. And so I'll ask the developer, if you don't mind going to the mic. I'll be quick, I promise. My, my immediate question is just, will the projects, will both those projects be prevailing wage, and what is the stance for you on the prevailing wage on those projects?
Yes, they will both, they both will be prevailing wage.
And is, is that part of the conditions?
I don't believe it's part of, no, it is not part of the conditions.
Is that something that would be considered?
Yes, we would, we would consider that as a condition.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. We also had a question in regards to the median strip, whichever.
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that question.
Thank you, Congress.
The, the re-landscaping of the median strip, and I believe the, there's actually two medians that run in College Drive between Skyline and Sherrill Drive. Both of those medians are not particularly good-looking, in contrast to the third median up College Drive, which is maintained by the Homeowners Association at the Marisol subdivision. There is no requirement in this project to landscape or to maintain median islands. However, the subject of improvement to those medians is something that is currently under discussion between city staff and Skyline College, and I'll explain very briefly why you, you might question why we would be talking about it. It is, as I mentioned, not a particularly good-looking couple of medians, but also we have received citizen requests from Ms. Livinggood's daughter in particular, and the ownership and responsibility for, for College Drive is actually a very interesting combination of responsibilities between the city and the Community College District. So we are the right people to be talking about this. While this issue is not included as a condition of the project that is before you tonight, it is something that we look forward to being able to discuss with the city council and with the community in more detail in the near future.
Those are the questions that I've heard and some of the very nice comments from those that shared their experiences. Thank you. Thank you for staying with us through the council meeting, even though it's on your ride home, but thank you for being here. And hopefully, this is like extra credit or something, so. Let's bring it back to council. Is there anybody who has questions? I'd like to go first, or comments?
Go ahead, Michael.
So in looking at the EIR amendment, I noticed, I kind of focused in on where the changes might be, and I noticed that there were a number of areas where district responsibility was replaced with city responsibility. And a lot of it had to do with, well, I mean, just the, the one I happened to open to, I didn't pick this one out, but it says, "Prior to start of the construction activities at sites, offering suitable bat roosting habitat, the city will retain a qualified wildlife biologist with demonstrated bat field experience." I saw, there was a lot of those where we were, basically, the city was taking on the responsibility from the district. And I'm wondering why it was written the way it was originally and what caused it to change in this addendum.
So the, the EIR that was done in 2015 was, the Community College District was the lead agency for that EIR, and in this case, the city is, is the lead agency. So we would be responsible for the mitigation, for monitoring the mitigation measures for this project, and it would all be at the cost of the developer. It would not be, would not be a city cost.
And that was my follow-up question. Okay, thank you. Okay, the, the other, it's not really a question, but I, I did have some concern with the way the below-market rate is being handled. And I understand that the district is providing a huge benefit to their employees by doing this, and my only concern was that in general, in the spirit of the program, we want to be able to fund more affordable housing for the public at large. And in this case, the affordable units are not being offered to the public, they're only being offered to the employees. And, and again, not to take anything away from this project, because I do understand that it is an enormous benefit to them, but I almost feel like we're shortchanging the program, the larger program, by not insisting that the below-market rate in lieu fee is paid, rather than counting the ones that would really already be affordable if, if that, if that restriction wasn't in place. They wouldn't be as affordable, but just, you know, looking at what they're doing, they would still be affordable to, to the employees. And so maybe you can talk a little bit about how that decision was made and if that could be modified at all.
So a little bit of background on that. The, the idea of having 11 deed-restricted units is that those deed-restricted units would be for a 50, 55-year period. So that gives the community and the college district some certainty to make sure that for that period of time, those units are affordable at the income levels that have been designated, low and moderate. The other units, as Mark indicated, would be, by definition, given the program, the college program, affordable, relatively affordable. The deed restriction, though, requires that they be affordable over time. The college district program could change over time, and those other 19 could fluctuate in terms of whatever program they put in place. So that's important to understand. I think that from- place. So that's important to understand. I think that from the staff perspective, in terms of looking at this project and looking at the community overall, we anticipate a fairly large amount of development over time throughout the community. As we look at the transit corridors plan, for example, with the build-out of the TCP, the Transit Corridors Plan, we anticipate approximately 1,610 units. As we look beyond the TCP along El Camino Real and think about the Grand Boulevard Initiative and the idea of trying to bring more housing to El Camino Real and close to services and employment and transit, we expect even more housing there. As we look at commercial development within the community, say, for example, as perhaps the Bay Hill area would intensify, there'd be more development there. This past year, we passed an affordable housing linkage fee. So we would expect linkage fees, commercial linkage fees, for example, to contribute to affordable housing needs and demand throughout the community. Where I'm heading with this is that the affordable housing program for the city is, is cobbled together and comes in different forms. So for example, as you heard tonight from a couple of individuals that are living in college-sponsored housing, district housing, they're within walking distance of their employer, employer, employment. And so it seems suitable in this case, given the fact that we have a large employment base right there, to make sure that these units could be available to faculty and staff and then provide some guarantees over time in terms of the 55-year deed restriction. Elsewhere in the community, as we, as we do other projects, we'll be looking for inclusionary units and fees along El Camino Real, you know, within our downtown, and commercial linkage fees contributing directly to an affordable housing fund that can be used for housing elsewhere in the community from our commercial projects. So it's, it's cobbling together and kind of looking at where's the employment, who's living nearby, how can we address things like proximity, reducing traffic, trips. I think from the staff perspective, in this case, providing those units so close, walking distance to faculty and staff, seems to make sense. And there'll be other opportunities elsewhere in the community for other affordable housing units. So that's, that's the rationale.
Yeah, I, I understand that it does, it does make sense there. But at the same time, I think the district is in a, in a very, very good position financially. They, they have the luxury of owning properties where they can have these projects and do actually really wonderful things for their staff. We've heard talk from the high school district where they're gonna do similar projects for their staff. But yet, you know, we have, we have teachers at the elementary level here in San Bruno, we have city staff, we have a growing homeless population, other segments of our community that need attention. And so I was just, you know, wondering if there wasn't an opportunity there to make it a little more equitable, so that they can still do what they're doing, yet still contribute to this other unmet need that we have in the city.
I think that, say, for the school district, the local school district, there may be opportunities in working with the local school district in the future in terms of their needs. Again, the overall community-wide affordable housing program is kind of cobbling together a lot of different opportunities to meet the broad need. And so we, we see this opportunity here at the Skyline Residential Project, well-positioned to, to serve Skyline College.
Marty?
I, I only have one question. Eileen, you mentioned that you, or that the development would have the infrastructure for the San Bruno cable to the houses. Did you also mean to include the multifamily houses as well? Okay, that was my really only question. And the answer was yes, yes, for people who can't see that. I do have some, I just wanna compliment the planning commission and our staff and your staff for the very thorough job they did. And I wanna make full disclosure, 'cause I believe three years ago, I met with you both, and I'm nodding to Eileen and Barbara, to do, to look at the very preliminary sketches of what this project was going to be. So I wanna say I did that and be part of that. So anyway, I think they've come a long way. I really particularly wanna compliment how closely you've worked with the neighborhoods and how extensive your outreach was and how much you are doing for them that is not usually commonly done by developers. So thank you very much.
Marty?
I have a number of questions. First of all, the change in the EIR identifies an additional 21,000 cubic yards of soil to be hauled off-site. And so I wanted to make sure that there is gonna be a hauling permit for that and that there's a pavement survey done before the work is started, and there'll be one at the end of the work is started, or after the work is completed.
On that, there definitely will be a permit required. In terms of the details of the permit, perhaps we could have an individual from the public works staff respond to that in more detail. But yes, there definitely will be a permit.
Good evening. I'm Will Anderson, staff engineer, public works engineering. So to address your question regarding the transportation permits, yes, they will be required. And the quantity will be based on the volume of dirt removed. And then the pavement surveys, they are included as a condition of approval, both preliminary before work starts as well as post-construction. And the extent of the surveys actually goes beyond the project limits. I think the farthest project limit plus, I believe, 300 feet. So it's above and beyond their project limits.
Another question I had was, in the EIR, there was a mentioning of a change in the construction schedule from 38 months to 16 months. And I'm concerned of the capacity of our staff to inspect that work. How is that gonna impact the availability of the inspectors in San Bruno? I will tell you that I inspected both of the Summerhill projects, and it was pretty much a full-time job to see the water, storm, sewer installed. And I just wanted to hear from staff that do we have, what are we, how are we gonna meet a very aggressive capital improvement program and take on this additional work? What are the plans to, to fill, fill those inspection requirements?
Jimmy?
Hi, good evening. I know currently have two public works inspectors, engineering technicians positions, and we'd have one vacancy that we're planning to hire as well. And so we're continuing to do that to seek for, to seek additional candidates, you know, to fill that position. But if we're unable to do that, and when this project starts, we may have to look out, look for other outside resources to fill in the gap in the meantime, until we find, until we find our candidate to, to be in-house for an inspector.
And if I can clarify, I recall that there's a billable number that is charged for each hour that the employee works on that. So that is a fully recoverable cost.
That's correct. And any contract staff that would need to be brought in, as the director just indicated, would be recovered, the costs would be recovered as well.
Okay. That's great, thank you. My other question is, is to kind of follow up on council in Salazar's about the below-market rate. So the rental units are below-market rate, but there are no homes below-market rate. I'm just curious, why not?
Be happy to respond to that. The, the college district has the opportunity to propose an affordable housing plan per our ordinance. This is what was proposed in terms of trying to address, again, going back to faculty and staff anticipated deeds at Skyline College. So in terms of providing for rental housing that would be multifamily and could be constructed at rates that could be affordable to the range of faculty and staff that they have at that location, the multifamily element or component of the project was thought to be, and we agreed, to be a good way of providing housing stock that could be constructed at prices that would be more affordable and could result in rents deed restricted over time or offered through the district over time that would be affordable and allow those individuals to save and hopefully move into market-rate housing within the community or within the area, as we heard tonight from, from the gentleman who spoke about his experience working with the district and then being able to move into housing. So that, that's again, the rationale for that.
Can I just?
Sure.
You know, typically, you would not do that for, you would not designate a market-rate single-family home, which is going to be quite expensive for an affordable unit. And there's, there's a couple of reasons for that. One is, the gap is huge. You know, what a low-income household can afford to play, or even a moderate income in this climate doesn't even come close to, you know, to, you know, come close to the, the cost of a for-sale unit of that type. And, you know, you see, you get more bang for your buck in a, you know, in a multifamily complex. And one other issue is what's typically been found in, in for-sale affordable housing, if there's a homeowners association, those dues can change. And usually the dues are not subsidized. So in addition, you have the dues. And, you know, if something happens, I mean, they're responsible for doing a lot of maintenance on that site, and the, and the rates go up, then the, you know, an affordable, a person within a low or moderate income, income range is gonna have great difficulty, you know, being able to continue to afford to live in that unit. So that's another reason. It's just, you know, just a very wide gap.
Just wanted to confirm that the streetlights would be LED lights?
I'm sure our city engineer could confirm that. That's the expectation, but perhaps a city engineer or Will Anderson could confirm that for us.
That is, that is the expectation, since, you know, try to conserve energy.
So expectation and, and what we get are sometimes two different things.
Well, the LED is the standard that is being, is being used throughout the city. These streetlights will be privately maintained. So I don't know if we are requiring that same specification, but we would, I believe the directors, using the word of expectation...
Am I hearing that?
I've seen a nod and a thumbs up in the audience.
Well, and I think also it is that you want it to meet the lighting needs that we, we want as safety in the community.
That's correct.
But honestly, if we're not paying for it, to tell them exactly what it's gonna look like, I don't know, you know. But what, what the expectation is to meet the safety standards in the council's direction, that we have an expectation throughout this community. Is that what you're wanting to hear? Is that correct? Is that how I'm hearing it? So we've got nods all around.
What, what I'm actually looking for is, you know, it's sustainable, clean energy, having LEDs, more efficient. So hearing that by serving on the Peninsula Clean Energy Board, it's, it's something nice to hear that we're gonna start requiring that, not saying that it's our expectation, but to have that requirement is a more sustainable practice. So it's good to hear that.
Beyond that, yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Another, just some, for the maintenance of the striping and the stop signs, right? So these new stop signs, the four-way, that would, isn't currently being maintained by Summerhill, but it's, that is part of the project. So wouldn't that be required to be maintained by Summerhill? Or I'm asking that, I think it should be, if the whole point of putting that there is for the project, when it gets knocked over, it, it seems like it should be maintained, maintained by the, by the project.
Just to be clear, you're talking the signs and the actual markings on the street?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are we talking about the traffic stripings?
The new, the new stops, the stop signs.
Well, yeah, there will be a maintenance agreement developed between the city and the applicants, specifically outlining what they are supposed to be maintaining. And the striping, interior, I guess whatever striping and siding they place as part of this project, are, we can include within that maintenance agreement.
Okay.
And it will be a recorded document.
Everything that's new, the stop signs and the markings, you know, the legends, crosswalks for those new stop signs, 'cause there'll be crosswalks there, right? Right?
Yeah.
So that, that being new, just thinking that that should be covered by the project?
Yeah, like I, I think whatever is installed.
Okay.
Definitely along the project frontage. I think there might be a minor discussion about the, the stop signs, I guess, that exist over at Marisol?
Yeah, that's probably something a little different, but everything that's new.
So I wanna get clarification on that, 'cause from all the projects, and I haven't been on here as long as others, but when it starts coming to our street signs, we usually don't have some outside agency, or HOA, no disrespect, to do that. I mean, even at Merrimott, at that park, even though they're paying for everything, they can't remove a tree without asking the city.
No, no, that's, that's a little different than what I'm asking, because everything inside, everything, let me finish, everything inside of the project is being said, I heard, that is being maintained. So that stop sign that's, that you come up against when you're trying to exit the project, is that included as part of the responsibility, maintenance of the project? I'm getting a nod over here, so that's great.
Would you care to, rather, please, more than welcome to go to the mic, so that we're very clear.
So as you leave the project, there will be a stop sign, crosswalk. We would assume we would maintain that. The new stop, there'll be stop bars and stops in College Drive. I believe that is actually owned by the college. So I would ask that maybe we work offline to make sure somebody takes care of it. But practically speaking, it's probably better for the college to take care of that, and then the homeowners association to take intract. The only item that would be hard for us to, even from a bureau of real estate standpoint, is to maintain the Cheryl, all the bike lane down to Skyline. I don't think that we can accept the maintenance of that, that far off-site, given certain requirements of the bureau of real estate. So we'll install the Class 3, but I don't think we can, the homeowners association cannot maintain that.
You didn't ask about the bike, right?
I just wanted, since I'm up here.
No, thank you, thank you.
Just because you're talking about sliding and scrying.
No, that's great. And just, just wanted to make sure all the sidewalk on the, the new sidewalk will be maintained.
That's correct.
It's maintained by the property owner.
That's correct.
If I could, through the mayor.
Yes, please.
In terms of the comments just made by Elaine Breeze, we would expect that would occur, that the improvements within the project, the private street within the project that she outlined, would be maintained by the HOA. But as they go outside of the project, outside of the private internal street... outside of the private internal street onto College, then that would not be the HOA's responsibility. So, for example...
But it's a college responsibility?
On College Drive, that's to be determined between the city and the College District.
Okay.
Within the, within the project, the private internal street within the project is the HOA's responsibility. Outside, as Ms. Breeze indicated, the share-o's, as an example, would be the responsibility of the College District City, as we work that out.
Okay. My last question is, if somebody could just do, provide a little bit of information on the trees that are being removed and the trees that would be replanted, and are there any native trees planned to be installed anywhere?
Think if I could, if I could ask the developer, developers' representative to come up and speak about that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, so, is this on? Yeah, okay. So, yeah, there's tree removals, so for the apartment site, there's 55 trees being removed, five that will remain, and 76 new trees. The new trees will be a combination of native trees and just adaptable trees. For the single-family, there's 76 trees being removed and 125 new trees being added, same situation. So we'll be taking some of the species throughout the community, particularly across the street that are doing well, bringing them over to our side and paying close attention to mirroring back and forth as we go down the street.
Okay. I'm glad you're here to get that. Those are my questions.
Did everybody, did everybody get their questions answered? Did we confuse you at all? No, okay, good. All right, before us are seven items, which each have to be taken independently and individually. A vote needs to be cast. All of them are resolutions, with the exception, which is item three, which would be waiving the first reading, we would need a motion, a second, and then introducing the ordinance. So is there any action from council on the first item? I'm sorry, Michael. City Attorney?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think there's a couple of things. First, need to close the public hearing.
That was done.
Okay, I missed that, sorry, I apologize.
You were doing dual duties.
I was pretending to be the city clerk at that time, is that right? Well, I don't seem to be doing a very good job as the city attorney in the meantime. So I thought it would be helpful if I went through these, because some of them do have some additions that we want to make sure are captured in the record.
Excellent idea.
Would that be okay, Mr. Mayor?
Please, yes, and before you begin, Councilmember Medina's had a question or comment.
Comment before we go into the action. So I want to congratulate the project team and staff. This is a excellent use of creative thinking in building housing for faculty and staff. This outside-the-box thinking is something that we need to consider more often and something that we can learn from. I'm hoping that additional surface property in San Bruno could be utilized in a similar But everything looks great on paper, and then you get into the construction mode. I've worked twice in San Bruno with Summerhill Homes. I've worked twice in Fremont with Summerhill Homes. The issue isn't the quality of the work that Summerhill does, it always comes down to the contractor and how much control the developer and the city work on making sure the contractor does the work. I'm currently, I'm nearby the Plaza Apartment, the old theater site, and there has to be real teeth in requiring a contractor and the developer to control that contractor to make sure they do the right thing. I've seen numerous times where the traffic control was not adequate, workers parking in the neighborhoods. So I want to stress the importance it is to make sure those things happen, and having an experienced inspector onsite to make sure that that happens. I know that's the responsibility of our department head to make sure that happens, but I would stress the importance of the experience of somebody who's been in the trenches to see this work. I wanted to stress the importance of making sure, from my experience of working in construction for over 20 years, of how there needs to be one identified person that anybody that has an issue in the neighborhood can contact, and that person needs to be steady, the same person, because what I see often, not, it's going to happen here in Summerhill, but in many other instances where the person that does the underground does their work, and then they leave, and then up comes the vertical person who's doing that work. So I would suggest that we make sure that information, information of that one contact person is readily available, and that there is a running log that is sent to the city to make sure that it's clear that the person who had the issue, it was reported to the developer, contractor, and that information is given back to the city so that the city is also aware of what the problems are, with the dust, with the noise, with the, with these construction equipment starting at 6:00, and it doesn't, well, it says that the construction can't begin until 7:00, but people have to drive to get to the construction site, and it gets noisy at times, and where they park and how they idle their equipment, those are complaints that are going to be sure to come. So, again, thank, thank the project team and staff for this creative and much-needed project. Thank you.
City Attorney, if you could begin the process.
All right, Mr. Mayor, so we have seven actions, six resolutions. We're going to do those six resolutions first, to keep it simple. So the first one is to adopt a resolution, adopting an environmental impact report addendum and mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program for the project.
Move to approve?
Resolution's been introduced by...
Would be introduced, a resolution.
Sorry, forgot.
Member O'Connell.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the second is to...
Hold on, City Attorney, we had also talked about the prevailing wage and adding the conditions, you're going to add them.
So those are, those are coming on a couple of the subsequent actions?
That's why you're the City Attorney.
Doing my best. Okay. Moving right along, the second action is to adopt a resolution amending the general plan to change the land use of a two-acre site at 3,300 College Drive to medium-density residential for the proposed project, and that resolution will include a new condition that the project will be constructed with the benefit of prevailing wages, as agreed to by the developer, to the satisfaction of the city.
Action?
I'll, go ahead. Introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Next resolution is to adopt a resolution approving a vesting tentative map for the Skyline College Residential Project at 3,300 College Drive, and that would also include the same prevailing wage condition. It would, well, we'll just stop there.
Action?
I'll introduce that resolution.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Next resolution is to adopt a resolution approving a planned development permit for the single-family portion of the Skyline College Residential Project. Here we have two additional conditions. The first one is the, again, the prevailing wage condition, which we discussed before. The second one is that a detailed photometric study will be prepared to evaluate areas within the development and around the exterior frontages to determine the minimum light intensity for the LED streetlights to the satisfaction of the city engineer.
Action by council?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Next, we have adopt a resolution approving a planned development permit for the multifamily portion of the Skyline College Residential Project, and that will include the two conditions we just talked about, the prevailing wage and the LED photometric study condition.
And I'll introduce that resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
The last resolution is to adopt a resolution authorizing installation of stop signs on the eastbound and westbound approaches of College Drive at the intersection with Marisol Drive.
And I'll introduce that resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Then you have, the last action is with respect to the ordinance, amending chapter 12.96 of the San Bruno Municipal Code to establish a planned development district, update the zoning map, and adopt a development plan for the Skyline College Residential Project. We need a motion to waive the first reading.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those know, ayes have it?
And then, last but not least, we need to introduce the ordinance.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye, and I want to thank you folks for staying, I want to thank those, our guests, I want to thank you for the stories that you brought forward to us about what can be and what will be. I also want to do compliment, as the other Medina said, is that also, you really did reach out, you did go to the traffic safety, you did go, you had to go to the planning commission, you did go to the Parks and Rec, and you really through this process and the neighborhood meetings, I think, really reached out in order to try to get a feel and a feedback from a variety, the TSBC, a variety of the individuals in this community. And I think those are the steps that help a project get off to a great start, and it is the communication going forward, keeping the neighborhood informed, and having contacts that they can get a hold of and they can get responses, because as you know, the most frustrating thing is when you have a question and you don't have an answer, and with no answer, then speculation occurs. So congratulations to you all, and thank you for staying through this evening.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We do not have any reports of committee commissioners or board. Vicki, public comment?
Public comment? It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to law. The first person to speak under public comment is Marco Derazzo.
Sure.
Hi, good evening, everyone, I'm Marco Derazzo, Second Avenue, evening, mayor and esteemed members of the city council. It is my understanding that the search for a new city manager has been initiated. I also know that the final decision on this very important hire will rest with the city council. So my comments here tonight are regarding the community input in this hire. I want to respectfully suggest that the council think about this process in the most innovative and inclusive way possible. We vet our elected leaders as our democracy mandates, thus in searching for a new city manager, I hope that we can extend this level of inquiry to a certain degree to those who wish to serve our community in this important position. I understand that there are fundamental differences between a council member and the position of city manager, including the authority the city manager ultimately reports to, and I respect that. I hope, though, that these differences do not obscure or minimize the need to solicit community input in this process. You may be wondering what specifically do I mean when I ask you to be innovative and inclusive in this search. I will tell you this, the more the community feels consulted with on this matter, the stronger the bond will be between the council, the city manager, and members of the community who really want the best for our city. Once finalists have been identified, it would be ideal to make them available for the public to meet, greet, ask about their experiences, their priorities, and really the overall vision for our city. These processes are similar to what those wishing to represent us on council engage in, and I guess depending on who you ask, submit themselves to as part of the process. Let the community weigh in, voice their opinion, and begin the buy-in process with the understanding that the council makes the final decision. You may already have something in mind, if so, I and others, I and others in the community would be more than happy to hear it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Vicki?
The second person was Lexi Livinggood.
And I think she was, she spoke already with the item she wanted.
Okay, good.
Is that it?
The next item is conductive business. Item 9A, appoint citizens to fill vacancies on San Bruno's Parks and Recreation Commission, Culture and Arts Commission, and the Community Preparedness Committee.
Okay, just so, we'll go through how we're going to do, we have two lists, everybody have the two? Okay. And what it was is, we have two lists, we have, we were blessed to have a lot of good applicants and individuals that came forward for the interview process and applied for the positions. We have a list of those, and we have a list of those who've had and kept them on file, and those folks are always eligible to be a part of that process. You do not have to show up or have been a part of the interview process in order to be considered and/or appointed. Some people were not available and sent a letter in lieu of, others, obviously, there's a scheduling conflict. So what we do have is, we have on community preparedness, we have one vacancy, on culture and arts, we have two vacancies, on parks and recreation, we have two vacancies. We also, on the San Bruno Parks and Recreation, we have a youth representative, which needs to be a junior or a senior in order to serve. So what we will do is, I think with council concurrence, we'll go ahead and we're going to start a community preparedness committee where there is one vacancy, we'll look for nominations, we'll look for a second. If we have that, then we will see if there's any other nominations and seconds within that area of community preparedness, and then those who have been nominated with a second will come back and then we'll vote, it will take three votes in which to obviously be appointed to the council. And if that's okay, everybody, we okay with all that, then we'll go ahead and begin. Nominations from the floor for Community Preparedness Committee.
I'd like to nominate Janet Legis, I think is how you pronounce it.
I'll second that.
And council can help keep me on track, too. Any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, all those in favor of Janet, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Let us move on to, we're going to take the ones with have one vacancy. The Parks and Recreation Youth Commission Representative, again, it has to be, it is a high school student, which is a junior or a senior. Nominations from the floor, please.
I'd like to nominate Nicholas Sly, or, yeah.
Is there a second?
No, okay.
Other nominations? Other nominations on the youth representative? Yes, Martin, I'm sorry, I didn't see, I apologize, Michael's leading forward.
I'd like to nominate Kathy, I'm sorry, Lynn?
Is there a second?
I'll second Kathy Lynn.
Okay. Kathy Lynn has a second, is there anybody else to be nominated? If not, all those in favor of Kathy Lynn, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is unanimous? Kathy Lynn is now our new youth representative.
And through the chair, I just want to say that among the young people that presented themselves tonight, they were very impressive, every single one of them, and this is probably the most difficult choice that we had to make, so...
I think they could replace three of us, just saying, but they were exceptional young people, and what they already do for their community and their engagement and their passion is incredible, gives us all hope that we have, we have good, good future leaders and people in this community. All right, let's move on to the Culture and Arts Commission, we have two vacancies, so we'll go ahead and we'll probably have a couple nominations, so may I ask for a... Yes, Michael?
I would like to nominate Judith Pacini.
Is there a second?
Second.
Other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Janet, I wish I could pronounce things better.
Monahan.
Thank you.
Janet Monahan, is there a second?
I'll second Janet.
Other nominations?
Yes, sir.
Please.
I'd like to nominate Plymouth Ansberg.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't look for an up-down, thank you. Right here, I'm sorry, Martin. Is there a second? Is there a second? No second. Are there any of the nominations for culture and arts?
Yes, I'd like to nominate, here I go, Connie Kowawing, I think is how you pronounce it.
Poplar?
Poplar, yes.
Is there a second?
No.
Okay. Any other nominations? Any more for me, Marty?
No.
This time, Michael?
No other nominations.
No.
All those in favor of Judith Pacini for the Culture and Arts Commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the next one, Janet Monahan, all those in favor of Janet, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Okay. Now we will go on to the Parks and Recreation Commission. We have two vacancies. Nominations from the floor, please.
I'd like to nominate Nicole Chanon, Chancon.
Top one.
The very first one.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second from Nicole. Are there other nominations?
Yes.
Marty, please.
I'd like to nominate John Severs.
Is there a second for John Severs? Sorry. Other nominations?
Through the chair.
Michael?
I would like to nominate Jessica Martinucci.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Other nominations from the council, please?
I'd like to nominate Michael Zastro.
I'll second Michael Zastro.
Okay, we have two nominations so far. Are there any other nominations for me, Marty?
No.
Michael?
We had so many.
We literally thought we have this list here for us, so it's impressive.
We've got two.
Did you do Jessica?
Yes.
Not that Jessica, Jessica and the other.
Yes, okay, right, right, right.
We have Jessica, who has two, and then you have Michael Astro. Any other from you, sir?
Well, we have two.
No, that's fine. Okay. All right, so let's go. For the first one, all those in favor of Jessica Martinucci, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And next one was Michael Zastro. All those in favor of Michaels, so can everybody say aye?
Aye.
Okay. We have the appointments. Again, I think as each one of the council members said, please be engaged, please attend the meetings, please feel free to participate, and please know that it was an impressive site for all of the folks that we had. I mean, it was incredible. So thank you very much. Okay, next, Vicky?
Item 9B, approve design and adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with G. Portoloto and Company, Inc. for the Bel Air Parking Lot Improvement Project in the amount of $148,889, approving a construction contingency of $23,000 and appropriating $20,986 from the Measure A Fund.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. During the last council meeting, staff provided a brief overview of the status of three projects, which the city received a total of approximately $450,000 in grant funding from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. The first project was to purchase the replacement shuttle bus for the senior center, which was completed back in 2012, and the other project was to replace sidewalks, curb ramps, and new benches at various locations. The city completed installation of 22 curb ramps along the roads leading to bus stops, but the remaining work for the installation of the new benches had not been completed. And at the last council meeting, the city council approved the Bus Route Pedestrian Improvements Project for installation of the 10 new perforated metal benches. So this item tonight is the remaining project to be completed, which is improvements to the parking lot adjacent to Lyons Field in the vicinity of Bel Air Elementary School. The project is to improve traffic circulation, reduce difficulties for buses, maneuvering through the parking lot and streets leading into the school, and provide new sidewalks and curb ramps for pedestrians. Similar to the previous project, this project was delayed due to staff turnover within both SAM Trans and City. So the slide shows the, some of the project improvements that will be taking place within the project. Remove the driveway approach there at the parking lot and add lanes of travel in opposite directions within the parking lot, restrypping the parking lot, installing new sidewalk, sidewalks and curb ramps. Currently, the area has asphalt as sidewalks without location. The city was awarded $151,000 for the project, which requires a 20% match, and city staff performed a design in-house and coordinated with SAM Trans on the project improvements. The project was advertised for a bid once in December and again in January, and the city received eight bids for the costs ranging from approximately $149,000 to $290,000, and the engineer's estimate is approximately $160,000. The lowest bid was received from G. Portoloto and Company in an amount of $148,889, which is approximately $10,700 less, or about 7% lower than engineer's estimate. Staff reviewed the bid documents and determined that the submitted bid is complete and accurate, and the firm has the qualifications and completed similar projects in San Bruno as well as for other agencies such as Daily City Polo Octo and New York. The project will begin construction after school ends from June to August, and staff has coordinated with the principal at Bel Air Elementary School to confirm that the construction timeframe works for the school schedule. As for the fiscal impact, the fiscal year 2017-22 budget includes an allocation for this project with a carryover balance of approximately $165,000, which is insufficient to fund the entire project once the 15% construction contingency and staff project management inspection budget is included. An additional appropriation of approximately $21,000 for Measure A is needed to supplement the project construction cost. Currently, there's approximately $700,000 in unallocated Measure A funding available. The total estimated construction phase of the project is approximately $187,000, which includes the construction contract contingency as well as the staff management and inspection costs. So this concludes our presentation. We'll have to answer any questions.
Questions of staff? Marty?
Yes. Congratulations on the in-house design. That's always something that's great to hear. I recall G. Portoloto did the paving through City Park back whenever that happened, and they were responsive. The one thing, well, contractors always are a little, kind of problematic, so provided that we have the inspectors, I'm sure we'll be available to make sure in clarifying hours of operation and when roads can be closed is probably the most important thing. So thank you for this project. I think it's a long time coming, and it's, that pavement over there is in pretty bad shape, so thank you.
Any other questions? Staff, comments? Any action by council?
Introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Now, we'll move on to comments from council members. Michael, anything? Marty?
I want to acknowledge the passing of a resident of San Bruno, 51 years living here, Earlene Mersny Clement, AKA Grandma Lini to her grandchildren and to my son Max. Grandma Lini raised her four sons here in San Bruno, Rod, Reed, Ryan, and Corky. She's an avid world traveler and volunteer in our community and our surrounding community. She was very kind, very considerate to others. My condolences to the family. We all miss her.
Thank you, Marty. Also, I'm the bearer of some sad news as well, and it saddens all of us, that we learned yesterday that our friend and the coworker at San Bruno City Hall, Ricardo Dimas, I'm not going to say it right, Amaya?
Ricardo Dimas Amaya.
Okay, okay. Amaya, he worked at our San Bruno City Hall and other facilities within our community. One thing that was always, I found interesting, and I do, because I'd go late at night to pick up my mail, and he would be there and he's doing his job, cleaning it. Nobody knows, nobody sees, but the work's got to get done. And it was always to me fascinating to stand and talk to him for a moment, just to hear him and his humor, his dry sense of humor, and a very engaging man. And he's worked for more than 15 years. Started back in September in 2002. Ricardo joined the San Bruno as a custodian, and he took great pride in the service to the city. His years of dedicated service to keep City Hall clean and welcoming, and for his diligent effort to ensure rooms were set up for a wide variety, including some of our own meetings ourselves. Ricardo distinguished himself for his positive work ethic and his thoughtfulness. Also friendly and willing to help others, Ricardo displayed the positive can-do spirit that made him invaluable and a great member of the San Bruno team. He will be deeply missed by those who knew him and worked with him. So please join me also for Ricardo, Ms. Mersny, that we adjourned tonight in a moment of silence in both of their memories. Thank you. Our next regular meeting of the City Council will be held on March 13, 2018 at 7:00 PM here at the San Bruno Senior Center. Everyone, please enjoy your week.